Okay, it is six o'clock. We'll call the Policy Committee meeting to order. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Happy? I did. I have to say it tonight. It just happened. Yep. Um, welcome to winter, everybody.
Till the weekend.
Till the weekend, right. The newspaper said. Mary Kay, roll call, please.
As is previously or now?
As is now.
Danny Hyatt?
Here.
Angie Schreiber?
Here.
Dr. Novy?
Here.
Dr. Dewey Sprague?
Here.
Okay, for new business, I do apologize for a resignation that I received from Dr. Bardo. And I just want to read this. It says, "Dear sir, it is with great regret," I'm sorry, "it is with regret that I'm resigning my appointment to the Policy Committee as of this date. This is due to my commitment to my wife Carol, who is undergoing chemotherapy and then a regimen of radiation, and because of my own continuing health issues. I will continue to serve the district as your Vice President, Finance Committee Chairman, and as a member of the Curriculum Instruction Committee. Signed, David V. Bardo." So, as, I'll give that to Mary Kay so she can file that where it needs to go. When I received that from Dr. Bardo, Angie has been doing a lot of policy research, and this is something that she is passionate about. So, I approached her and asked her if you'd be willing to serve on this committee. So, thank you, Angie, for accepting, and we'll make the formal seat at the next board meeting. But you can chime in tonight in the meetings, okay? So, item letter A is the School Force Public Use. And what you see in front of you is the policy that came from Mr. Wordio and Faith, potentially?
The committee.
The committee, thank you. Mr. Wordio, you want to come and join us?
I do.
Sure. There's just a couple of things that I saw on here, and I did send this to Mary Kay, but I do have copies of some things that I saw. Nothing really major, so y'all can take one and pass it around. What I would suggest, and this is just a suggestion, and this is up for discussion tonight, obviously, is just changing a few things, and I'll wait till everybody's got it. And that would be... Tim, yeah, there's enough for everybody, I think. Amy and Jake. This is just something that I actually took this, what you had sent out, Mr. Wordio, on the committee, and I had a couple of people in the office that I worked, look at it and say, "Hey, what do you think about this?" Just to get your input, too. And the number three, the youth under the age of eighteen, somebody suggested to me, and I kind of agree unless I know the reason why, that we just don't say students should be supervised or shall be supervised at all times. Is there... What was the...
Well, I guess the policy is mostly meant for public use of building, not much school use.
Okay.
And so, we're thinking like if we have a forage group there, or we have a family gathering, invariably not students, they're just people under eighteen.
Understood.
They should be supervised by...
I think that would go with the number seven, when you look at the facility request.
Yeah.
Because A is the USDA school groups, that would be the first group of all students.
Right, right.
Because it's said in here on the next page that it could be our school, or it could be parochial or private schools. But then when you look at non-school groups, it could be maybe a chess group or something that...
Sure.
Maybe those kids are not part of our school district, and at that time, the parents might say, "Well, they're in our age of last year, maybe I have this..."
Okay. That's good.
I would definitely, maybe what you could do is students and youth under eighteen. That takes all students as well as, for eventuality, that you have a non-district student.
Did you give a... Is there another copy of that that we can... I'll give JD mine. You keep yours, Tim. I'll give him, because I got it on the computer right here in front of me. I can pull it up.
But I put students first because primarily for USDA students and...
And any youth under the age of eighteen.
And anyone under the age of eighteen, or any youth under the age of eighteen.
Okay.
That way it covers any non-inflicted groups that are...
Okay. On item number five, it's kind of hard to explain five without looking at that Group 1A. But whenever we said after all USDA classes have been scheduled, private parochial schools located within the unified school district of Anago, the district highly recommends to work through the school force, which should be. So, the suggestion was if you would jump over to that Group 1A, which would then has a group all by itself of private parochial schools, there wouldn't be a facility fee, but there would be custodial fee and a school force coordinator fee. And then the other question that arose is the negotiable. I mean, do we need to put a fee in there for that negotiable where it said for a school coordinator? Or that was just a number that I personally threw in there. I don't know what...
Well, will the school coordinator be on site? Will he be there if other schools have...
I don't know.
That's where the negotiable, I think, came in, in that different groups might require different... Might require the school force coordinator to do different things.
Right.
They may ask her to develop lessons or share the lessons she has and let them use them. And that could be work that she's not even there for. There could be times where she has to be there, you know, as a supervisor, or we need a representative there while another group is there, which means that she's physically at the building. There could be times where they would like her to teach, okay? If she's teaching or she's using our time, we felt we can't just let her...
Oh, absolutely.
So, I felt that, I guess we felt negotiable was a little bit more because it's going to be so situational.
Sure.
Mr. Wordio, your question. So, if that school coordinator has to prepare for something, if they ask for a form of plan or some teaching material or stuff like that, that person is spending time paid.
Right.
Who's paying for that?
That's where we could...
So, I still put it at an hourly wage. And you could specify that, you know, do you feel that if they're there in person, it should be more than if you sat at home and did it? Because to me, you're, any one hour is the same as another hour. You're still away from the family or for whatever reason, and you're still devoting it to whatever party is heading up with the school district for that time.
So, we could just say that whatever time it is, she or he would just keep track of the amount of time that was spent specifically on that.
Yeah, you could put something in there in the fine print saying that this could be agreed upon ahead of time on how many hours it will take, or that part would be negotiable. But I think instead of saying the whole price is negotiable, then it might be that, you know, you're playing favors, you know, somebody, you know, you might charge this versus somebody else.
Mm-hmm.
I don't want that to be...
And that's where I was coming in with that, just a flat hourly fee of fifty dollars, but whatever that fee would be.
Whatever you can...
Yeah. What would potentially be that fee? Would you have a thought? I'm just trying to think of her...
I'd be interested on that if you don't mind.
Sure, absolutely. I mean, her...
Well, I think it's less than that, but what we had talked about is maybe Faith is meeting the group there and opening the building and saying, "Here's where things are. You ask for this material," you know, and getting them started and then leaving. That would be something if they're saying, "Okay, we're going to be here for four hours, and we'd like you to lead our group for four hours." That would be something totally good.
But I think she should be compensated for being that person to go and open and close the building as well. I mean, she shouldn't do that just for nothing.
She shouldn't be compensated. We, the district, should be compensated. She's already getting paid to do that.
Okay.
That's her job to do that. But we are getting compensated back for someone who's not a school district.
Right.
User group, yeah.
So, I don't know what that hourly rate should be.
Are you going to charge for her time driving up and driving back?
We typically don't. Like, if a custodian drives in to open the middle school for a user group, we don't. Now, I know that's a little further out.
Well, in this day and age with the rise of gas and everything, do they use a school district weekly?
So, Faith has a stipend for extra travel.
Okay.
So, she can bill us, bill you, for a certain amount of travel because we felt that there would be extra trips, you know? So, if she just goes up for the day, like, that's her day is to go up there and then back, I don't think she's submitting that because that's what she does.
Her, that's where she always is.
If she has to make a special trip up there, or has to go twice, or whatever, then she has the right to. I don't know how much she used that last year, but she has the right to submit that.
But this is not for a school district group.
So, this could be...
And we're just saying, oh, if you drive in a truck like I do, it's a gallon to go, a gallon to come down. That's...
Yeah.
Can we back up just a little bit and frame it in the context of the facilities use that we have now? So, we have rates that were defined years ago with the idea that people that generally reserve the building, our residents of the district. So, we have four different categories of groups. And, you know, Jake can attest to this, his guys, when it's outside their normal schedule, they track their time. And then those groups get billed on a twenty-five dollar an hour basis. Likewise, our AV technicians that open up the vault, and if it's not a normally scheduled hour of operation, the groups get billed. We try to accommodate anybody from probably like seven in the morning until eight at night, six days a week, and then Sundays and straight billing. That includes snowfalling and everything. They have to pay for that if they require the building to be owned. So, what I'm kind of dancing around, you have Group 1A here. We don't have Group 1A. We have a policy. We call that a community nonprofit group. So, education groups that are outside the district, yet part of the district, get billed at that Group 3 rate.
Well, the thought, Tim, was the private and parochial schools, parents and people that, their children that attend school there, they're taxpayers.
Yep.
And the thought was, since this is even a private and parochial school, that they wouldn't be charged a facility fee, but we don't want our staff to be unpaid. That they should still, they should be paid something extra for taking care of the private and parochial schools. That's what the thought was behind this.
So, what we're seeing there is you're saying you wouldn't want them to pay fifty dollars for four hours?
No. No, that's what, if you notice in that Group 1A, you don't see a facility fee just to the private and parochial school. You would to other organizations. So, if a daycare...
That's your decision, but, I mean, we booked it this as a group, and it's kind of consistent with our rent though.
But do the private...
And that's what I was hoping to see, but it's not in the Ola, the current facility policy.
No, it's been a long time.
Yeah.
Tim, do we ever have use of the private and parochial schools using any of the other facilities? And...
You know, and again, we try to waive as many fees as we can. Like, if you look at our budget, I mean, I don't think we probably get ten thousand dollars with the rental a year. It's not even that much across all district buildings.
Right.
It's not a significant cost. And I think, you know, when you think of the, let's say, if any of us wants to rent a little park pavilion, I mean, these rates are very, very comparable to what the city's charging. Yeah, and it's just my opinion that we have a category, Group 3, was for community education.
Was that community?
So, what is your suggestion?
Well, I'd like a little bit of latitude, like we do with all of our rentals. We refer to the rate sheet, and then we will tell them when we get a requester. We work with them and say, "Okay, now, if you can fit with any of these guidelines, we're not going to charge you." A classic example would be, we have all the youth traveling athletic stuff. So, we have girls' basketball, boys' basketball, wrestling, and volleyball. If they're using the facilities within Jake's normal scheduled time, they pay almost nothing. But if they want to host something on a Sunday, they're to pay from when we open until we leave. And if they don't clean it up, they're going to pay for cleaning, too. But they know that ahead of time.
So, where do you want this latitude? Is it Group 1A, or are you bringing it for waiting for Group 3?
Group, Dr. D, Group 1A was just a suggestion. That's not part of the original. That came from the committee. That was just a suggestion. But from what I'm hearing from everybody, we're not going to do that 1A. We'll just throw that out. But one thing that we should talk about is that negotiable rate for Faith. So, if you go to the other groups, you know, Group 2, Group 3, and Group 4, when you see that negotiable stricken into the hourly wage, we should talk about that. And then the other question that, Tim, that I had was on Group 4. For groups, the nonprofit groups, where it says may be required for the insurance certificate of liability? Is there a reason why we say may and not must?
Yeah, because, and I'll say, the reason is typically, we look at the size of the group, whether they're charging admission for the group, and the activities of the group.
Okay.
So, as an example, if we wanted to rent it out for, if somebody wanted to rent it for baby shower, and they're going to have twenty or twenty-five people at the baby shower, we wouldn't necessarily want to have them go through the liability. They're going to open it up for, let's say, a triathlon, and this could be headquarters for fifty people coming and doing all sorts of crazy stuff. We probably want them to have a certificate of liability. And what the district's liability carrier does is they have classifications of the debts, and they can take a one-day policy and they actually buy it through our agent at very minimal fee based on the number of people that are attending, whether they're charging admission, and then the types of activities they're going to be doing.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's a little bit of latitude there. I mean, it typically gets people, like, let's say you're going to have a benefit, and it's something really quick, and they're going to bring a musician in, and they're going to try to do some fundraising. Well, when you start getting those kinds of activities, and you're not familiar with a group, you don't have any track record, so you'd like to just simply require a certificate of liability. We get to know who you are, how you operate.
Is it hard to get?
It's not.
No, they issue it within a couple of days of...
They mean some random insurance company?
Your insurance company, yeah.
It's not tied to our insurance, it's just to our agent. It's called a tulip policy, and we're in a consortium with sixty-two districts, and all sixty-two of them have the same policy available.
I'll just give you an example. Whenever, there was a time whenever my church rented East Elementary, and we provided a certificate of liability insurance to the district for the times which we were inside the building.
How much money was it?
Nothing. I paid nothing for my certificate of liability. And the fee was very minimal, and we didn't require custodian because I cleaned up everything afterwards. But like Tim said, if we required a custodian, we would have to pay that fee plus snow removal, and we just took care of that ourselves.
So, organizations that, if they're an organization, a lot of them already have insurance.
They do, yeah.
You know, and it's just kind of adding the school district on, you know, as a, also insured. Someone like a family, you know, you don't have that kind of insurance, and we require them to get something or not. We decided not, we actually did check with Highlander on that particular topic because they do rent theirs out quite a bit, and they said they just haven't, and it has a better problem. So, that's why the main was in there.
Okay.
Because some groups will, and some groups won't.
Okay.
That will be up to who will decide it.
Usually, the facility rental goes through your office.
So, we still need to decide on that negotiable rate?
Yeah.
Do you think fifty dollars is too much?
Just by way of discussion, I thought it was appropriate.
The way that I thought was Faith with her schooling, her training, and she, if they require her to develop some type of curriculum, you know, that's what you're paid for is her expertise, so to speak. I don't know if that's what you were thinking, Julie, there.
Well, and our curriculum rate isn't that much, but again, that's because it's for the district. You know, Faith, we're working on lessons for our students. I mean, she would have her standard...
This, within that, yeah, yeah.
You know, I think that's an okay rate. I mean, Faith, only rate is this amount. Hers is under thirty-five dollars. But that's not including any benefits or anything. Fifty dollars is probably closer being accurate.
So, we just want to change that negotiable to fifty dollars per hour. And then the other thing changing there is students on number three.
Students and youth.
And youth under eighteen, yeah. Eighteen and under, number three, I think it was. On the very first page.
So, for Group 2, Group 3, and Group 4, just replace negotiable with fifty dollars.
And then on number five, it stays, nothing's changed on it.
Take off that one?
Yeah, the reservation rates will apply. That stays there. Does that all make sense?
So, even though this is the Policy Committee, this would be like an addendum to our current facilities use policy instead of appearing like in Board Acts?
So, you know, I'd have to go back to the old, the old policy book, but we just refer to what our sheet was probably back from, maybe like 2014, 2013?
Because what we could do ultimately will discome back to this committee, or from here go to the full board.
From here to go to the board, yeah.
What we could do is put that facilities sheet that you're referencing as an attachment. So, then the board could see both, and we're trying to align it.
Just as long as, Mary Kay, that we have the understanding, the board is, will be voting on just the no-boken procedure, not that facility use that we currently have. So, you can word that that way.
So, you're referencing the use of district facilities policies, is that correct? Because I'm looking at the policy, then I'm, we have used district policies, and we have facility planning, and then we have...
Actually, what Tim's referring to is a, just a rate sheet. It's not in a policy anywhere.
Right. So, where is this going to be? So, like, if I'm the public and I want to rent this, I should be able to find it somewhere publicly on our website, you know, what, where to apply, and how it needs to be handled.
So, you have two different things there. One of them is where are you as an org going to place this? You know, but then we intend to make this accessible in the school forest link on the website. So, if you go to the school forest web page, you'll have, you know, keywords for rental or usage.
Okay.
That's where I would think you'd go.
And then here's how you go about it. And then basically, it says you have to contact Central Office for the, like, for the villa.
Okay. That's good to know. And then, so my, two other questions. So, on number seven, page two, we decided that reservation classrooms will be reviewed by the Central Office. So, now, Julie, I think you said that it goes to Tim. So, do we want to clarify that? Or like, who do they contact to Central Office? Would be one question I would be wondering as a public looking at this.
Well, for example, don't most originate with Beth here at the high school?
Yeah, there's two tracks that they go. It starts with the facilities request with Beth, and then Beth clarifies what they're looking for, what they need, falls into something that needs to run to the business office. Then Beth forwards that to complete the errand, which they handle. But it depends how it comes. Because sometimes people will just call Central Office and say, "I want to use the gym," and then we have to...
Point them in the right direction.
Right.
So, if they just call Central, the gals there get calls like that enough that they know how to get them to the place they need to be.
Okay, that's what we hear, too.
Yeah.
I'll just interject. We wanted to, our typical renters, so when we think of the athletic groups, they have some kind of a committee structure, and someone is taking care of making sure the reservation gets made. They become a full-fledged requester. They can log online, they can do all this stuff. We were thinking this was going to be one-off, two-off kind of a thing. And rather than get cumbersome with becoming a requester, becoming familiar with the website, we were going to just start off doing it at Central Office, keep it simple, you know, post it on the web. Come in here, here's a table for the snow like on it, kind of like we used to do it. And if it's, if we repeat, we can go ahead and funnel them through rep.
And then that also stays consistent with how people request to use the forest for hunting. So, we do allow hunting on the school forest, but it has to be by permission only. And we did, was that thing...
That is the policy.
Yeah, I think it was.
We instituted that, and it's also handled through Central Office, and it's only by permission only. And that's to ensure that we don't have any incidents, because we've never had a policy, and it became an issue because people would just use it.
Yeah, I didn't know, I didn't know that we rented the facilities, and I didn't know that people could hunt on it. I didn't know that at all.
That was fairly...
When we brought up this idea of the facility at Hulken, that was part of the deal, is that we would make it accessible to the public. And this kind of sold it that way, too. And the board was very much like, "Yeah, let's utilize it for more than the school." I was wondering, with your question, would it help, Tim, to add Central Office, Business Office? Or, you know, so it's not as so broad, or...
Sure. And for routine stuff, Aaron just knows. This is, it's this time of season, it's this weekend, it's the same rate as it was last year. Jay's got a custodial log, and he tracked the extra hours, and maybe get to go.
So, as I look at this, these are all group categories. So, I just heard Angie say something, so I can't rent that. So, what if Angie or I decide to have a high school graduates party there, or maybe a family could get a category?
That'd be the Group 4, yeah. That would be resident, non-resident, for-profit groups.
I just sent you the rate sheet that I was referring to.
This is originally attached to the proposed use policy.
Well, I got to read it as resident or non-resident.
For-profit group.
Yeah, non-resident or profit.
But then not for-profit or some family.
It's a family.
So, I would say resident. I mean, we could be, you know, show more clarity there.
I would, because then you might have people who might show some interest in this.
Sure.
You know, are you going to have family reunions there?
What would you propose there then on that, for that Group 4?
Just literally add another comment, say, family reunion slash graduation party?
Right, right. Because the way this, the heading is right next to Group 4.
That's fair.
It's for-profit groups, but it doesn't say anything about individual family or families or something like that. So, maybe some clarification there.
Or if we just say resident or non-resident groups?
Groups, with the for-profit off. Yeah, that would work.
We don't have any more, we don't have family groups.
But there's nothing there. We are not making a profit because we are not...
So, to take off for-profit groups.
Or they might try.
We need to revise that definition, too, which are limited primarily for profit. I guess I wouldn't have to be...
Or you could add before that, any, before that could say individual or families, comma, groups or organizations or agencies.
Do we...
Or resident, non-resident groups could be its own category. We could still have a for-profit category.
Yeah. That would make it a lot more clear.
Or then you'd go for four, number five.
You'd go Group 5, then.
Group 5 would be individuals or families, whether they're residents or non-residents of the school district.
Because businesses...
And then you could use the same category, but then, then you don't have to work with all of Group 4 DVD, but have a separate category to pay if somebody's trying to rent it, especially now with the new building and everything, and you made it so lucrative for people, you know, if somebody in those communities are not, and they just decide to...
Well, like you said, baby showers or things like that.
I think we're trying to avoid another group because the policy for other facilities has, these definitions pretty much came right off of that, you know, what are already defined for our other facilities. But I get what you're saying. We need to include family groups in there.
Somewhere before that, before you put all those organizations or something, you could say individuals or families of the resident slash non-district resident, individuals, comma, family, families, comma, or organizations or agencies whose interests are for profit. Maybe that works.
Why don't lots of them drink alcohol? Why don't lots of drink alcohol?
School.
I mean, is that up to?
That would.
Is it really recommended because, just like we don't at the high school?
It's a good place.
Dr. Deeb, could we in the definition part of group four define that? Because they give, they give the examples, businesses, vendors, entrepreneurs. We can define families.
Yes.
That can be defined in there.
Say profit or nonprofit and then include families in.
Yeah.
But you have the nonprofit, we didn't have previous.
You have the nonprofit number three.
We have in your email, Tim sent the.
We'll have to make it a or family.
Okay, sure.
Separate it out somehow. Okay, yeah.
Do we advertise this?
But if you have.
We will.
But this is.
Can you wait?
Do you?
When do you want it?
I mean, I don't.
Negotiate.
I don't watch advertising, but the word will get out. And we, we have a couple requests right now and we're kind of asking them to wait.
Nathaniel.
If somebody does it, it happens, you know, you get invited to a party. And we had that at the Heinz and Pavilion, and then pretty soon you could find any dates there.
Better of areas, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Nathaniel was there for the first time last week and he came home and he said, Dad, you've never been there. You have, yes, I've driven by. And he said, you've got to go. He was very, he was super impressed.
We should have brought him up there.
We should.
Yeah.
We should.
We'll charge you fifty bucks.
Yeah.
We can try and.
So I just, I just want to say that the, the county now charges twelve hundred dollars to rent the, the fairgrounds plus utilities day, which runs on average about three hundred to three hundred and fifty a day. So plus then there's the cleanup fees and everything else. So, yeah, there's people.
Then for people who are north of town, the last two years I've seen, I've asked like, you have all these family get-togethers there. For those people, it's a hop, skip, and jump to just get there to this facility.
Mm-hmm.
Just, um, on the other side of what you're saying, the city charges forty dollars to rent a, a pavilion. So I think we got kind of too extreme there. And I believe the city is more on the lines that it's basically, well, first of all, if you live in cities, so you are a city taxpayer, you pay forty dollars. If you are not a city resident, it's more. So they're taking into account that you are paying your taxes, you're a city resident, this is for you to use. We just need a little.
Yes.
I think that's okay. The county, on the other hand, seems to me like it's, they're going, in my opinion, they're going.
Yes, yeah.
A little bit too far. You know, my tax dollars mean nothing to that facility anymore.
Right.
Because they're going to get it all back out of its usage.
But the different groups that have held things at county fairgrounds might be looking for other places.
Yeah.
You know, so, yeah.
What are you going to do if someone like books it constantly? Are you going to, and then someone else wants to book it? Are you going to make some sort of like, you booked it constantly? Or is that just not worth putting into policy because it'd be?
First come, first served, right?
So it doesn't matter? So if I go and say, I want this every day for the next year?
Oh, I see what you're saying. If somebody says I want this.
We give a ninety-day.
We give a ninety-day limit. So you can't book it for next year, October, because we don't know what the school schedule is yet.
Right.
So we want to make sure that we give our school priority. And those things can be scheduled and then if it's available.
And then open, yeah.
But if you have, you know, a group, say, any church wants to use every Sunday, you know, like they did at St. Elmer for a while, you know, I, but those are things I think you deal with individually.
On the individual basis. So how do you do the planning for next, a new school year? You know, if you're given ninety days plan, somebody comes to you in August and says, I want to rent this on September the twenty-third, and then all of a sudden now your school group wants to use it September the twenty-third. How do you plan for that? Or have you thought about that?
I think we leave it up to the coordinator, how, how much of a priority is that twenty-third?
Okay.
Um, right now, it's not being used every day for a school group, you know, every school day. So there are open days and perhaps a group that maybe just requested the twenty-third could come on the twenty-fourth or next week or whatever. But, so it's usually not until August that those are beginning in September that all those.
I'm just going back to the welcome back day, whenever she was getting all the dates from the different schools. And unless she says, or whomever is doing the scheduling, we leave September, October open until after the school starts to get their dates in.
She has a pretty good handle on how many days. And I think now that this is her second year, she's seeing that the, the first grade is kind of choosing about the same week or so. And she's trying to.
Good.
Some way.
It'll also probably go into the teachers' planning, you know, as they prepare the classes and everything, maybe they can plan ahead. And if, if the stakes up and you're having constant request to rent the place, then maybe we got to be proactive as teachers to think about ahead of that.
Oh, and I guess we also have the right to tell some, but, uh, some other group that, um, we can't make that decision until the state, you know, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe.
Yeah. Any other questions about this? So we'll bring it forward for next Monday night's meeting, making those few changes. And you can get those, other, the verbiage that you want to marry Kay, and we'll have that in the attachments for Friday.
Do you want this in our first and second?
Well, it's really, it's really, it's not really a policy. This is just facilities use. So it doesn't need to be first and second, yeah.
Do we still need a first and second with the policy committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, because we, we can't decide anything here as far as what's the law.
So you need first and second at the full board? You decided to move it forward from here to the full board?
Yeah, but this isn't a policy. This is a facility.
Oh, right. I was just saying.
But if it, right.
If it was, like you were saying, yeah.
Yeah. We would have to have. So, for example, the next ones, the next three that we're going to talk about, next Monday will be the first reading. And then the meeting.
So if somebody says I want to change something, then we talk about it. It doesn't go back to the policy. Maybe you would just come back to the full board.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, yeah. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, moving, item B, the grievance, grievance procedure revision. Julie, you probably want to talk about this a little bit with Dean, yeah?
So what you see uploaded here, the attachment, is from Dean Dietrich, who, as you know, represented us through grievance procedure last year. And as he did that, he made notes on, because he's very familiar with our policy. We're not the only district he works with who has Neola. And so this is his preference. What is not uploaded is the current policy. I thought of that.
I, I do have copies of the current, just, just in case.
Good. So, um, having become intimately familiar with this policy, I do support Dean's changes because he tried to add clarity. And that is apparent to me. Since he knows the law statutorily, I know it is appropriate. And it would, this would be an example, should we move it forward, to answer your question, J.D., it would just be a first reading. And then you'd have to come back again.
I'm assuming this policy is in, because I found it in two places, in the three thousands and the four thousands.
Same.
But it's the same thing, but depends on which.
Yeah.
Yes. So that's why you have both of them actually, the ones in the three thousand and the four thousand. But I did discover today that it had the same language.
Right, many of them.
Yeah. When we was going through, uh, the last issue with the grievance policy, Dean had mentioned to me on the telephone that we will, we will need to upgrade this, update this policy, but we couldn't at the moment. We had to wait until we was through that procedure. And this was his recommendation.
Right. And it doesn't change, like the steps?
No.
Or the reason for grievance, et cetera. All of that remains the same. It is his attempt at providing clarity and interpretation of the same.
The question I have is how would this fit in, Mary Kay, with Neola? Because, you know, we have our stamp at the bottom that says this is from Neola. Obviously, this is not from Neola.
I can send policies to Neola that we've drafted.
Developed, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because I recall in the very beginning with Neola that we can make things unique to our district. And then they would approve that. And obviously, this coming from our attorney.
The only thing I have concerns with is, say, you know, we have a teacher or staff or whatever that has, is having issues with what the grievance, but what if that grievance is directly related to either the direct supervisor or, um, like, you know, like administration, something like that? What is the process for that? Because you file a grievance to the person you have grievance with, you know, I could see that kind of going sideways.
But they should bring it up to the school board then.
Yes. There's nothing, you know, everything basically follows a chain of command. So if there's an issue within that chain of command, then what, what's, they'll try to.
So termination is listed as grievable offense. And that would involve the principal or supervisor, like you're saying. So then if you follow the steps, just like it did last time, if that employee's dissatisfied with the termination, it comes to me.
Okay.
And then keep following the steps. What you could be referring to, Angie, because like, uh, an evaluation is not grievable.
Right.
Um, so let's say an employee is feeling harassed by a principal. That actually would not follow this grievance protocol. That would go into a complaint officer, which Tim is one. And that would follow a different channel. And that outcome is, the employee keeps going until he or she feels satisfied with the outcome, including to the board.
Okay.
So that could be what you're referencing. If I have a problem with my supervisor, do I have recourse to address it? And that answer is yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I think compared to what we have in here, what's proposed is very, very clear.
Mm-hmm. I know when we was going through the process just recently, I was having questions of going through it. And that's where.
This is, this is quite vague.
Yeah.
If you look at it here, it's very clear to.
Yeah.
Whether it's the employee or supervisors or whoever, what their roles are.
Yeah.
Because it says right here to Angie's point, if you have somebody who has grievance with their principal, and they do that step one, discuss it's step two, and they file or write a grievance with somebody, you leave a copy of yourself. And if I am your principal and I don't act on this, you can directly go there to step three and say, you know, here's another reason why, you know, that you should not have been in this position because I went through one and two and he just let it rest.
Yeah.
And today's day six.
Sure, okay.
So I think this one is very clear, the path that it has to take. Not that it's not in there, but it's, I don't know, sometimes you intentionally leave certain means away and bylaws.
So this is going to replace both? Just get two titles?
Right. If, if and when it passes, Neola will, with Mary Kay's help, updates that the policy numbers are the same, addressing the two employee groups.
So this would take place of the policy in the three thousands and four thousands?
And so if somebody, there should be a little footnote at the bottom that says, from Dean Dietrich. So in twenty years, when someone looks at this, they're not totally confused. You think, oh, he's like a.
We could have, yeah.
You just remember, we had that.
I think Neola might even get that in there.
Developed by USDA.
Yeah.
Yeah, how do you?
Developed by USDA.
I think Neola has a way to list those that are district-driven instead of adopted by Neola.
When I send in the disposition sheet, there's a column for, um, district drafted.
Yeah. And that's what, instead of at the bottom, it won't say Neola twenty twenty-two, it will say USDA twenty twenty-two. And maybe there's where we could put a, a note recommended by school board attorney Dean Dietrich.
And I'll ask Dean, how he wants that noted.
That's true.
Okay.
And then they could always put a link to whatever they have here to replace the old Neola policy.
Yeah.
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 That was what, that's what I was going to ask. So where it says, on the policy, this is adopted and gives a date, last revised, gives a date. In, in our board policies, we have, we have the retired policies. So I'd like to see.
Where that can be retired.
Yeah, that this is actually stated as retired on such and such.
That's a good thought.
Uh-huh.
And the place where.
I think, yeah, Neola does that with each, right, Mary Kay?
Oh, there's several there.
Somebody wants to go back and get it.
Archive.
To see how it changed, yeah.
That's the word, they archive them, which we don't always have.
Yeah, because a lot of, a lot of the policies I found don't match up with, you know, the adopted date, last revised date, something in, in our policy manual. But then in the administrative guidelines, it doesn't match them. And you, it's just this mess in a couple different points. You can't follow the paper trail back. And that you should be able to do that.
I'm confident Neola can follow it.
Yeah.
And I, I think that's what we pay them for, to be honest. Because when I try, I get lost too sometimes. And then Mary Kay's better at it than I am. And if neither of us can figure it out, we ask Dean or Tim.
Might just be a technical correction. And it'll be revised on the administrative guidelines and not necessarily the policy. So you might have updates that don't have the same dates on it, that way.
Yeah.
So that would make it a little difficult to match them up.
Policy questions, I would say, ask Mary Kay, because she has that direct line.
That's a whole different conversation that you, we can have.
If you go to the convention in January, they'll, Neola has a booth there.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. They will answer all your questions.
So what, so if you go to their website, you cannot find their, I guess, standard verbiage on policy. I need to have a login.
Oh, yeah. Because it's, you have to pay for it.
Yeah. So I couldn't even.
Yeah.
Get anything with that.
Yeah, you have to.
Yeah.
And that's by design. That's how they make their money.
Sure.
Yeah. They do sessions there at the convention, which is really good. Are there any other questions about this, presenting this next Monday as the first reading, the way that it's, that Dean sent it to us? No? Okay. We will move that along for the next, for the next meeting. Item C, the policy number thirty-one thirty, assignment and transfer revision. Uh, this was a suggestion from, um, of board members that came to me. There's, there should be plenty there for everybody. So thirty-one thirty, the way that it reads in the top part, uh, in a normal print, I would say, one of those is from Mary Kay, uh, is what we currently have. And then, uh, the, the bottom bold part is what we would like to discuss about being added. And the, the addition comes, uh, I'll just let you read it. This came as a result of our recent appointment with our middle school associate principal, which was a phenomenal appointment. Julie, that was, that was really good. And that's what the board members have meant, this to me has said. However, um, whenever there's an associate principal, dean of students, or athletic director positions currently, uh, they can just be appointed into that position without board approval, permission, uh, yes, no, whatever. So, so for example, with Tia Moch, if, if J.D. said, no, I didn't want that, uh, there was no input for that at all from the board level. So what this will do, this just, uh, appoints two people to be a part of Julie's team of selecting uh, somebody to go. And then the full board will approve that person, uh, that, that appointment, that transfer.
I strongly disagree. And it's because, um, should, let's say, that employee violate a grievance, then as part of the hiring committee, you have a conflict. We were always taught that hiring all certified personnel is my job, not yours.
Okay, I had, I had a conversation with Dean last Thursday about this. And he said, this is very doable and recommended for the board to do the, do these positions for administration. Um, he said he was surprised that, that Anna Go has done this in all the years, but nobody's ever asked him why that we do this. Um, because, um, I didn't want to throw anything that was going to jeopardize the board for anything, because that was my first thought too, because of hearing, no, this is what the board's responsibility is. But according to the statute that Dean sent to me, which I think is one eighteen.
How come you didn't send that for us to look at ahead of time, Danny?
I just got this Friday from Dean.
So shouldn't we have tabled it then?
Uh, Mary Kay, I was telling her, this is what we're, I'm waiting on Dean to get back to me on, for Friday on this. And, uh, because this is verbiage, not my verbiage, this is verbiage that came from board members. Uh, and then I said, Dean, is this doable? Is this, is this right or wrong? And he said, it is very doable. Same thing with the next one that we're going to talk about.
I'll push you back as well. It might be doable. The function of the board, the board, their sole person they hire is district director.
Right.
Julie's responsible for putting a team together.
Yeah.
And moving the district forward.
Well, not all school boards believe that, Tim. And, and so the majority.
Well, but obviously, adopting Neola policies.
Majority of the board. Majority of the board is wanting to push this through. Well, the majority of the board is wanting to push this through, and we have to follow what the majority of the board wants.
Why those three positions?
Uh, this, this would not include any teachers, uh, support staff. Uh, this is just, uh, principals. Um, well, principals is not even listed on there, because principals is in the next one. But associate principals, dean of students, athletic directors, because those positions are not included in policy 3120.
So, and I, I don't wanna, I don't think it, it's like taking what your role is away. It's just that, I think, two board members would sit down in on the process.
Appointed by the board president. I, I feel really insulted. And if Teal was a good hire, and in fact, he already was an employee, which is why you weren't asked to approve him in consent agenda, because that's for only new employees. But, um.
And that's where this is gonna cover, uh, Teal to be approved by the board.
Even though he's.
Even though he's already hired, yeah.
A current employee. Is that what you, I mean, I don't know, I guess I'm trying to compromise, which goes against my professional beliefs, too, but, um, in this situation, are you looking to approve internal transfers?
Only of these positions. It clearly says, associate principal, dean of students, and athletic director positions, not teaching staff, not, because principals move teachers around quite often as they need somebody.
I'm a little more confused. So elementary school principals covered under this?
Elementary school principals is under this, 3120.
Which is still, that's gonna get to the board, similar thing?
Similar, yeah.
Okay, director of curriculum?
That's under this. The only thing this covers, JD, is what, those positions that are there, because those positions are not in 3120. As an internal transfer, assignment and transfer, that's what we're, that's what they're talking about here.
But do we, do we have to sit in on the interviews? You know, the board can always make the decision once the administrator proposes those for approval to the board. We can always discuss it, you can have a closed session. I do not know if we want to micromanage those things. I think we need to be at that 30,000-foot level on the board. I think we need to get into the weeds with them. I, I think it might be a little difficult for them to carry that out, having board members be part of every action that they are doing there.
Well, this is, this can be amended next Monday to read whatever we want the board, the full board wants it to read. So next Monday, make an amendment.
So as, as the current one reads.
It's the top two, yeah.
The board does not approve it at all.
So is it the feeling of the board that they have to be part of all these appointments? Has there been concern about the quality of the decisions that are made?
That's a discussion for next Monday, and let the board members that presented this give their opinions.
Because this does say transfer, assignment and transfer. But now you are saying.
Oh, wait, so, right, so what is this? Is this, right, is this black tech taking, taking completely this out?
Nope, nope, that's adding to.
Because this, if they become vacant, that doesn't fit with transfer language.
No, this is, I think what they're saying is if you are going to use internal candidates to fill these three positions, then the board members want to be part of your interview team.
But if it's not internal, and you can do it every time?
If it's not internal, it goes under a different policy.
So then what happens if you are interviewing outsiders and you have an internal candidate? Doesn't that happen?
Yes.
So then you only look at the internal candidate, you don't look at the external candidate?
I would never do that, I would look at all.
Because if you have somebody who's coming from maybe Warsaw, Mozy, and then you have one of our own, so the two board members can only interview Teal, but they can't interview the other two candidates who come from Warsaw and Mozy.
But they can with this next policy, because there, these are external here. 31, what is it? 3120 is external people, this is just internal.
So you're still giving a small minority of the board. The board's appoint two board members to be a part of this election process. So let's say the two board members don't like the person, but then Julie still does. Then it comes to the full board and vote on it, or what?
Yes.
The approval comes to the, the entire board for their approval of the person and contract prior to the offer.
So if I could ask, if you have a hiring committee of, um, five people, plus the board members, let's say it's five people, and there's two board members. The majority of the people that did the interview select candidate A, the two board members select candidate B. We've always done interviews of that nature by either total consent or majority.
Then you would have majority, you would have three.
You'd have three, the majority.
Yeah, but then at the board level, right? What happens?
Then you ignore the rest of the committee?
Because you cut off your board members are speaking in favor of candidate B.
Right. But, so what you're saying is, is the majority for candidate, would be for candidate A, so then candidate A would be the one that comes to the board or full board?
Maybe not.
Because you're saying the board could just ignore the committee?
Yeah, the full board, yes.
Which flies in the face of everything.
I don't really, yeah, I personally don't have the strong desire to be trying to pick these things.
It reeks of mistrust, which makes me feel.
And I don't know if it's mistrust, if it's more, more power, you know? Regardless of the administration, you leave it there forever, you know? But I don't, you know, I don't have a desire to, or the time to wanna do this.
I think, you know, another perspective of this would be, you know, so when we're out in the community and commu, you know, parents or whatever don't like a, a position that was newly appointed, or, you know, hired externally or whatever, that they have issues with that person for whatever reason. They don't like how it's being managed this, and this isn't being done. I think if we were part of the interviewing process and approval process, it gives us a little bit of, you know, pushback to that, saying, well, this is why they were hired.
I would love for you to tell them to call me.
Well, do we get to know what personnel details like that normally? What about just the athletic director? That would at least a little more available, right? And then everyone gets to complain about the athletic director, not how, but, you know, historically, athletic directors are always getting a wine bottle.
Every coach has complained against, you know? As a parent, I can do that, nobody will like, uh, anything that a coach tells not to, unless you're today's, uh, star pupil that, you know, everybody raises up. But the rest of the parents always feel that, you know, the coach didn't do right, whether it can. You know, again.
Right.
You know, my kid should have, my kid should have, you know, my kid can't show a basket, but, you know, he should have been up there for, have the game.
Do you actually know any boards that, like, when we get the WASB book, it's like, hire the superintendent, right? That's it. But do you know any boards that actually do this?
I don't, but apparently our attorney does.
I bet you, you talk about it.
I didn't ask him if, what are those boards? I don't know if he could tell me, honestly, I don't know that.
Like you said, maybe we wanna hear from him.
Because I, I sit on several, all the way from here in the community, at the national level. Never have I seen anybody being involved in hiring of, uh, anybody below them. Beyond the hospital board. Hospital, they're not part of being in a physician. They're not part of hiring the clinic administrator. The board member interviewed me to give me a CMR, it's the medical director position.
All right. I haven't skipped, I haven't gone to too many WASB trainings, but I can remember the one where they said, oh, and the board member tried to get a desk in central office and sit there all day, you know? And then they'd say, well, no, that's not appropriate, you're supposed to be for.
It's not, yeah. You know, I, I think there is a hierarchy. You sit up there, you, maybe you're doing it in good faith now, but there might come a time where, in the future, there might be board members who will misuse that opportunity that you have given. Okay? You can be a non-voting member on there if you want to go observe, you know? That's a different story. But I don't think you need to be part of the interview process for any of these positions. I think, as I said before, at 30,000-foot level, I sit up there, I'm not going to get my hands or feet dirty by getting into the weed. Our job is to make sure that you hire the right person for the district administrator. He or she needs to pick who they do, and we are going to hold that person responsible because that is their job. If they are not doing a good job of recruiting or anything, you have them come to the board, you can do a closed session, and you can ask for explanation about why this happened. As you said, you know, uh, you have not had a problem, you, you said that that was a great choice. We didn't sit in on that.
I said that was a great choice.
That, that's what I said.
Not, they didn't come from anybody else.
Right, but that's what I'm saying. I'm, I'm just speaking to you, in the instance of as a board, I'm asking you as a board member, uh, to a board member, you said that that was a great choice. And I did not mean up there, Danny.
Yeah.
You know, that was an.
Will I always agree that was a great choice?
Probably not.
Probably not.
And again, you know, what Angie said tomorrow, we might pick somebody and, you know, we have been there, we have administrators that worked, that didn't work out, people left and, you know, staff was upset, uh, students were upset, parents were upset. We did the best under the circumstances and what was presented to us. You know, it's like a marriage, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. You can do the best you can to make it work. Sometimes it depends on what you do. It doesn't.
Well, what's, what's been presented to us is amendable for Monday night.
So I don't, so explain to me this board committees yet. How many of us are technically on the committee?
Three. And who's on this committee? JD, myself, and Dave, but Dave is, uh, has resigned from this particular committee, and Angie is in that place. And Julie.
So.
Well, Julie is an administrator, but she doesn't have, she.
Okay, so Dr. is technically, so we don't vote these out then? These are just informal, we just talk about it.
Yeah, and this is.
So that whoever is here can fill in the full board.
Can fill in, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So I can ask all my questions now instead of dragging the meeting on.
Is, is, when will we vote it on?
For first reading Monday.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think you should get Dean on the phone, because I don't know if him saying it's doable is different than him saying he thinks it's a good idea. I highly doubt he's gonna say it's a good idea. I'd be willing to bet you a good solid college.
Well, I'd like to talk to him as well.
Yeah, because he, because whenever I talk to him about this, he is actually, even today, he sent me some other information about this. Uh, and he wants to hear from me tomorrow, uh, after what this has come through.
Right, well, I'd rather have him at the meeting. If we're gonna talk about this, I'd rather have him on the line. He doesn't have to be here, but let's call him. If you can schedule that.
I can see if he can be on the line Monday at the board meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Or even have him here.
Or have him here, it's fine. Probably not as cheap.
I don't know. So this will be going on to C, and C and D actually ties right together. So, uh, D is coming around. And it is policy 3120. And the bold in there is what, uh, the verbiage to be added, and then there's a couple, uh, things to strike. So the bold that would be added is, as you can read, the following, professional staff will, shall be a separate category, director of buildings and grounds, director of business services, director of instruction, director of pupil services, and human resource specialists and principals. When these administrative positions need to be filled, the following process shall be invoked. One, the board president shall appoint, shall appoint three board members, of which he or she will be one, and two administrators to form the hiring committee for the, all applicants. This committee shall then interview up to five candidates. The committee, number three, the committee shall present two candidates to the full board in closed session to interview and offer a contract for said administrative position. Then the only stricken things that would be, would be on page two, and that's changing candidates to teachers. And then in the third line there, candidate to teacher, and then at the very bottom, the employment of teachers. The rest of the policy, from what I saw, is, has not been touched. I couldn't see anything else being touched.
Well, I think it goes without saying, I would have other people on these interview committees, not just administrators. Um, for example, we have business manager interview scheduled with the entire business office present as part of those interviews. This reading does not allow for that either. Because then what you're doing here is giving the board the majority, three to two others.
Because don't you even have for, say, for example, the principal at the high school? You have teachers involved.
Because you were on that committee, right, Danny?
No, I was not on that committee. I just, I just asked to see how this process works. I had no say on that at all. I just wanted to see how the process works. And, uh, and I got to see most of that process.
We would never want to limit ourselves to the number of candidates either, especially currently when there are so few applying.
And these, these two items is what will be going to Dean, uh, tomorrow for him to.
So according to how I'm reading this is, such approval shall be given only to those teachers for employment recommended by the district administrator. So who hires all the other staff?
Are you talking about support staff?
Teachers and support staff?
Yeah, I'm talking about support staff.
Isn't that building administrator?
Principals, coordinators, Melanie, so, rest is.
Okay, so you do not hire the.
We generally.
I'm rarely even in on teacher interviews.
You see on hires the line, the box that says who's in on the interviews, you know? And, and normally it's people that are associated with that, like Julie said, with the business manager, you would see business office people, their names listed in there.
Okay, so as I'm reading this, then you would be responsible for hiring the teachers, not the principals? Such approval shall be given only to those teachers for employment recommended by the district administrator.
Because she recommends to the board, that's.
Oh, okay, but they, oh, gotcha, sorry.
I don't know, I'm hard pressed to believe you'd find any superintendent who liked this idea. Yeah, you know, we're just.
I can tell you the 22 and Cessna, I would not.
You have a. It's hard to hold a superintendent accountable, they don't get to pick a team. You know, it's not like, you know, even with Julie, it's not like she had a very much choice in the administrator she got.
Yeah.
You know, we, not to say we did brilliant before that.
Well, no, but like to make, to make you, on your point, so that's why then the administrator would give guidance to the administrative team, even if she didn't get to pick them. If, if she wanted to give them direction and guidance to go a different route, for example, right? That would come from her, and then that would, you know.
When you say the administrative team, no, you mean she's supposed to tell the three board members?
No, I'm saying the administrative team is, you know, like the director of building grounds, business services, instruction, pupil services, all that kind of stuff, that, that is what I consider the administrative team.
All right, so tell me that again, say it again.
So Julie oversees all, all of the positions listed on this?
Yes.
So that's her administrative team?
But she does not get to hire them? Just the board and two other administrators? Three board members and two other administrators?
Well, she would be in on that, wouldn't she?
Is she one of the two administrators?
Is that correct, Annie?
It doesn't name, it just, you know, there's the, what the policy says is three board members and two administrators. It doesn't say.
So yours, the board president is gonna appoint the two administrators also?
This can be changed.
Who wrote the, um, suggestions?
Uh, I'll let that person identify themselves at the meeting.
So I, I think that Julie should be, or the administrator position should be in on this. In addition to whatever's listed here.
I'm afraid you're never gonna get board members to go to so many interviews. You know, I don't, you know, it depends on what your schedule is like, but if you.
It's true. It's true.
And again, this is not, you know, this is not.
Right, right.
And I'll be all, I mean, this can be updated.
But unless I have really screwed up and you are vastly disciplined.
Oh, boy.
With the current process, I just.
Hire before content.
Okay.
Okay? And if you're not.
We're almost done. We're almost done.
Thank you.
Say that again, Julie.
Right. So Julie doesn't like it.
If there's a reason, if I have really messed up with hiring, and no one has told me yet, I'd be willing to hear what I've done that's wrong. Otherwise, a slap in the face. That's how I feel.
I'd say hate it Julie that much. I wanted it to be someone else. Someone else is gonna hate us too.
Does it need, doesn't.
Giving the superintendent no power.
Does it need some, uh?
I think that's the point, JD. That's how I feel.
Anybody else have any questions?
No.
Okay, our next, uh, policy meeting, if needed, will be the third Monday in November. What is that date, Mary Kay?
Actually, I would like to request.
Yes.
That we do have a policy meeting.
Yes.
Um, and I would like to address, um, hang on, I got my phone in my, hold on, um.
Send Mary Kay the policies that you want to address.
Okay, but just so everybody else knows.
Twenty first.
Twenty first, okay.
So I would like to address the dress code, early graduation, uh, the process for that, um, and then student searches. Um, and the grant approval process.
And I think that would be the only ones that we'll look at next month. All right, this meeting is adjourned.